Welcome. I'd like to call to order the town council regular session at 7:35 and today is Monday, December 12th. If you could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Could we have the roll call, please Dale?
Council President Whaley.
Present.
Council Vice President McAtee.
Here.
Councilwoman Eddy.
Here.
Councilwoman Fogarty.
Here.
Councilman O'Neil.
Here.
All members present.
Thank you Dale. We have approval of the minutes of previous meetings. We have the work session November 28th, 2011.
I move approval of those minutes.
Second.
We have motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed, abstention, motion carries 5-0-0. We also have the regular session, November 28th.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
We have motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed, abstention, motion carries 5-0-0. Would anyone like anything removed from the consent agenda? No?
I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Ready to vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed, abstention, motion carries 5-0-0. Our first license tonight is a resolution granting a holiday sales license to Therapy Boutique, 330 Main Street, Wakefield, Rhode Island. Application by Candace Brown, 150 Schooner Drive, Wakefield, Rhode Island. And do we have, welcome, how are you?
Hello.
Hi. You would just like to tell us a little bit about Therapy Boutique? You have the cameras.
Well Therapy Boutique has been in business for about four and a half years now and we recently moved, we recently moved to Main Street from Robinson Street and we're a small clothing boutique. We offer clothing, jewelry and accessories and personal attention and carry very unique lines also.
That's great. Questions here at the table? Kathy?
Has business been better since you moved to Main Street?
Business has been better, yes. About a 30% increase.
Really, Kathy? Wow, terrific. Good, great.
I hope that's a little bit, change of in economy as well.
Yes, I hope so too.
Moving in the right direction.
Good, good, good to hear.
Polly?
What kind of clothing do you have? For like yoga?
No, 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 it's clothing, it's, we do a lot of denim, the higher end denim line, sweaters, blouses, dresses, little bit of everything. And our windows now are much better, so you can actually see if you go by Main Street, our windows look beautiful right now, decorated for the holidays. So you also can see straight through the store and get a really good sense of what we sell.
Carol?
I just want to say you have beautiful clothes and you do a great job, great jeans too.
Thank you.
And Jim?
Yeah, question actually for Steve. Steve, are we, how many holidays, are we talking seven or eight, what are the holiday sales license? What does that cover?
Covers the holidays.
Yeah, but which ones specifically?
It covers Monday holidays, Memorial Day, 4th of July.
So the what, seven or eight of these holidays?
Yeah, I'd say this well.
Michael?
Some of the history Jim is that there used to be a Sunday sales license.
Right.
And the legislature decided that it would eliminate that. A lot of the bigger cities complained about that because they used to get some considerable fees from those licenses. So what they did instead is change it to a holiday sales license so that those fees could stay in place. That's the reality of what happened there.
Thank you. Anyway, the place looks great and those windows, what a great job sprucing up Main Street. Candace?
Thank you.
And did we talk about the hours of operation?
The hours of operation are normally Monday through Saturday, 10 to 5. We also stay open, our customers, if they can't make it within those hours, they can call us and we will stay open for that. In the summer, we all try to, all of the businesses try to stay open on Thursday nights till about 8:00. And we are open now Sundays in December. We also do that in July and August, otherwise we're closed on Sundays.
That's great. Sounds exciting, we wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
So do we have a motion?
I move approval of new license A.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed, abstention, motion carries 5-0-0. Best of luck Candace.
Thanks very much.
Thanks. Our second license tonight is a resolution granting a victory license to Amanda's Restaurant Ventures Incorporated doing business as PD's Pizza, 1202 Kingston Road, Peace Dale, Rhode Island. Application by Amanda M. Orville, 7 Doe Run, Coventry, Rhode Island. And is Amanda here? Welcome. If you could tell us a little bit about PD's Pizza?
PD's has been in business for approximately 15 years. It's recently undergone, undergone a couple of different ownership changes, but I'm hoping that I will be the last owner. We're currently in the process of updating the menu and doing some business specials for all of the local businesses in the community and doing some redecorating inside, cheering it up a little bit. We're going to be putting some Christmas lights out this week.
Great, sounds good. Questions here at the table? Polly?
Do you use exclusively pizzas?
No, we have pizza, sandwiches, calzones. It's more of a pizza restaurant than just pizza place, all sorts of things. We recently added some New York style garlic knots. I don't know if anybody's ever had them, but you need to stop by and try them. Once you have one, you won't be able to stop, they're delicious. And updating and adding some other things, we added fish and chips on Fridays. So slowly adding some newer items for the community.
That's good. Further questions? Kathy?
You keeping your grilled chicken salad?
Yes, absolutely.
That's very good, I highly recommend it to anybody.
Absolutely.
And why don't you give us your hours of operation too while you're up here?
Sunday through Thursday from 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. and Fridays and Saturdays from 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m.
That's great, a lot of hours, right? Further questions?
Nope.
Do we have a motion?
I move approval of new license B.
Second.
We have motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed, abstention, motion carries 5-0-0. Amanda, best of luck.
Great, thank you very much.
Which brings us to, I believe, Communication C on page 4. This is a communication dated November 27th, 2011 from Dida DeRosa and December 1st, 2011 from Robert P. Kermes, tendering their resignation from the Economic Development Committee effective December 31st and December 2nd respectively are received, placed on file and the town council further directs. Polly?
Do you accept these letters and write a letter of appreciation for what we have done?
I'll second that.
We have motion and second. Any discussion?
No, just to put in a number of years hard work and we appreciate their efforts and thank you very much.
Right, two great people that have spent a lot of time dedicating their time to this town, so. Our loss, we have motion and a second, ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, abstention, motion carries 5-0-0. We have comments from interested citizens. Mr. Draga, please come to the mic. Welcome.
Thank you.
You keeping warm down in Jerusalem?
I don't have, I don't have a lot to say, I never usually have a lot to say, do I? I say a lot, but I don't have a lot to say. But anyway, you know how it goes.
You always make a cloud.
But I just came tonight, I almost missed it because I was sitting there with my grandson and my son and having dinner and then I says, "Oh, it's Monday." Oh my God, because I don't, the days of the week don't make much difference to me anymore. Anyway, I took a walk with my son, my grandson rather, a couple of days ago, I think it was Sunday or Saturday, Sunday, oh Saturday, it was Saturday. And we went down the beach and I love looking at stones and picking them up and seeing if I can find any sea glass and looking at the beautiful ocean that we have here and everything. So I ended up down by the walkway where you can walk up the ramp. Could I walk up the ramp? Do you know what I'm talking about yet? At the end of East Mattoonik State Beach, there's a ramp that you guys spent a lot of money building after a big storm and you put the big cement blocks in and, do you remember that? It was about a year or so, a couple of years ago? A couple of years ago, yes we do.
Yes.
Well, I asked my grandson, "What do you think about this sign on this?" The sign says, "Closed." Ramp closed. And my grandson said, "Oh, I don't like that." And I says, "Neither do I." As you probably would well understand. Anyway, I just was curious why it is closed. I'm sure that the word will begin with an S for the reason it's closed, is the only thing I can think of. That's safety. Is that the reason it's closed? Or let me embellish this a little, because these are the kinds of things that run through my mind. You know, is it because maybe some individuals that live in that area would rather have it closed? Okay, I'll leave it at those two.
I don't know of anybody in that area that wants that closed. It was closed based on the major storm damage that we had earlier in the summer, late summer. And it will be repaired and be open for the spring. We did not go in and do the major repairs that are necessary for fear that it would be damaged again during the winter months. So that's why it's been closed off and it will be redeveloped so it'll be available probably in late spring after we have what could be some serious storms during the winter that would damage the walkway itself. I want to say that the walkway was developed and constructed by the Public Works Department and is designed so that it can be damaged by the winds and the tidal action and then can be reset. The problem is getting the equipment down there to reset it and to do that once every few months doesn't make a lot of sense, particularly with the amount of traffic that is going to be using it during the winter months. So that's the reason that we took the action that we have taken. It certainly isn't because people in that area are looking to prevent access to East Mattoonik State Beach.
Well, that makes me very happy because if that was the reason, I would be quite upset.
In fact, it was that group in the area that really advocated for a more permanent solution to be developed there and worked with the town to be able to ensure that it was, it would work.
Well, I appreciate your problem with that and I fully understand the power of nature down there. And I don't think you're going to be able to ever get anything in there any better than you have. You have, I think you have a decent walkway, even though a few of them are a little off kilter now, but I don't think you'll ever get them on kilter. And I didn't notice any damage to the wooden walkway going up and I felt that the other part of it was perfectly safe. And that's why my mind started spinning in that other direction of people wanting it closed because they don't want people walking on their road or, and I'm glad to hear that that's not the reason, because that's really where my stomach begins to turn when that type of thing goes on, because I've seen a lot of it in the last 10 or 15 years. I don't really have anything else to say except that I don't think you're gonna, I don't think you're really, here's what I did, I went there for a walk myself yesterday and I didn't go for specifically to go down there, but I ended up there. And I love to walk up and I love to look at the view from the top of that bluff. So I went up the side of the ramp and I'm wondering which is more safe. I'll guarantee you that going up along the side of the ramp, if you had four or five or 10 people do it, they would tell you it would be a lot safer to walk up the ramp. But I walked up the side and I pushed through the bushes because I used to know the people that own the house on the point there and it's private property, even though there's nobody there, I wasn't going to walk on their property. I was respecting that. So I kind of snuck along the side and get up and I was able to get up, but I don't know if it's serving any purpose to have it closed right now. I don't think you're gonna, I think you're right about the storms this winter. And if, I know you guys aren't responsible for the shoreline where it goes into Narragansett, but if any of you have gone down that way and taken a look, there are several houses that are in jeopardy of being washed into the water. They're worse than I think at Mattoonik, I think wor, this is a worse situation as far as, because the, it's lower and it's all sand. So that's Narragansett's problem and it's the, I guess what it really is, is the homeowner's problem right now. And they're taking some action that I guess they got some approval to do, do some things that are going to hold it off, hold off minor, minor storm damage. Anyway, I wish I could say more because I've been listening to a lot of stuff on TV the last few days and some of the things that are going on right now in the country are mind boggling, mind boggling. And I listened to the House, I listened to some of the committee meetings and I don't know, I don't know where we're going, I really don't. Thank God we're not Europe, but if they go, we might go too. We gotta, we got some, it isn't over folks, it's, I think it's just beginning, so. Thank God for a good town council and a good town of South Kingstown because we're holding our own, but I think a lot of places are going to have a lot more trouble holding their own. Have a nice Christmas.
Thanks.
You too Bob.
You too. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Steve Corley of West Kingston. I heard you guys talking about the webpage, I like the town council's webpage, I don't know if it's just a fluke, but I wasn't able to get the town manager's proposed capital improvement budget via the links on the website, just want to bring that up. One of the things that was on, at least according to the paper, the budget was Stony Fort Road. I hope you can do whatever you can to get Stony Fort Road repaired. The other part, road is mentioned is Plains Road, which I happen to live at the intersection of Plains and Stony Fort. My end of Plains Road has always been a mess. I just assume it'd stay a mess a lot longer because the section from the 800 House section down to Flags Road is starting to crumble and fall apart too. Might as well all fall apart and get repaired at the same time. I would ask that the guard rail on the bridge, the narrow bridge get fixed. I saw another car, just scrape that part that just sticks out a little bit, another car scraped that and it just kind of, it'd be nice just to get that fixed. I heard a rumor that there's going to be a bypass going around Kingston via Plains Road. I hope that's just a rumor and I did see that there's some water test pipes in the turf field there, but it could just be for anything else. The town's garbage goes up to Johnson Landfills, my understanding, Johnson Landfill is a pollution problem. That means we're sending our pollution to the Johnson Landfield. I'd like the town council to consider the possibility of sending our garbage to the incinerators in Connecticut or other states or petitioning the governor to build an incinerator in this state. It's a much more less pollutant than garbage in a landfill. I got a Super Sun Fight, Sun, Super Fun site next to my house that kind of attests to that. Last thing I want to talk about is I saw that you're going to discuss the liquor license, possible lawsuits or whatever you want to call it. My thing is I'm always for a fifth less license or whatever, anything that's good for the town's economic development. But my biggest concern is I'm starting to hear things like, well, the last two licenses were given to people that were either on the council or associated with the town council. I don't know if it's true or not, I'm just saying there's a perception out there. So the next perception you get is, well, the town council doesn't want to put another license out there because they're protecting the license of the people that were on the town council that were there before. It's a perception, I'm not saying that's true or not, I just, the stuff I hear. The reason I bring that up is the fairest way to do anything, and I think I wrote you guys a letter, but I'm not always very articulate, is let people go through a process, that they go through the planning board or whatever and put the license up for auction. And people decide that they have a plan, a business plan that will work or it won't work. And if they have a plan that they think will work, I think they should be given a chance. And that's really all I had to say. Thank you very much, have a Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Steve, same to you. Did you want to address anything Steve?
Just on a couple of comments. One is the use of the landfill in Johnston is at $32 a ton for municipal waste. If we were taking the materials out of state, our costs would be substantially higher, which would mean that the residents would pay considerably more. I think that it's incumbent upon the Resource Recovery program to come up with viable solutions to deal with the odor problem and I think that they are working on that now. There's a number of steps that can be taken and will be taken there to be able to resolve that issue. The suggestion that a waste energy plant be constructed, I think is a viable proposal that needs to be considered, however, in Rhode Island, it can't be considered at this point because the General Assembly several years ago, at the time that a waste energy plant was being proposed in North Kingstown, passed statute that prohibits the construction of such facilities. Until that is removed from the state statutes, they will not be able to move forward with a waste energy facility. But it is something that does need to be seriously considered because as we move forward, the scarcity of the land at the landfill is going to require some type of other viable solution. So it needs to be looked at, it's a state issue because all of the cities and towns use that facility as well as commercial haulers. But it's also one that is currently under review through Resource Recovery and statewide planning. So I think something will be coming as far as a report and recommendations, but the landfill is really of critical importance, even if there was a waste energy plant, because there'd still have to be ash disposals provided for. So I think those are the only ones that I can address, I certainly am not going to address anything as far as licenses are concerned.
Any other comments from interested citizens? Jim?
Yeah, thanks Ella. At the last meeting, I'd mentioned that I was hoping we, the council could put a work session together. More, I've been thinking about that. I really think the council needs to just have a good conversation, think tank conversation. I've been in town for 20 years, you know, we have our guiding comprehensive plan, but there are awful lot of changes and we as a council up here, over the many years here, we seem to be reacting or so defensive most of the time. And I'd like to take a lot more of a proactive approach here, just take a look at what's, you know, going on with our major businesses, URI, South County Hospital. We've got to start being a lot more active, those two, both are being massacred here up in Providence. Something's wrong, you've seen the, what's happening over in Westerly. Aquaculture, all of a sudden we have a new business, how can we help with that and improve in that? We have two Wakefields, one the Commons and one our downtown Wakefield. How do we make them both better and how do we get both of them to improve and both be a lot more profitable? And should we take another look at the Commons with some of the retail component as well as helping downtown Wakefield, see if we can work something out together? I know I've got plenty of ideas on LED signs. You know, we've got Mattoonik, we have our beach fronts. The casino issue, frankly, we know we're going to lose a lot of money when Massachusetts comes in place and what they like to hear from South County is a casino and table games better in Providence and Newport, just so they don't take away from the P-Packs and the theater and the arts group up there. That may be something we want to get involved with and it may actually help us in the long run. Wind turbines, there's so much new here that we're reacting to everything going on around us and we do have good plans and good rules, good ordinances, but it just seems that nobody ever gets to hear from the council and we have, gosh, what do we have here, 100, 140 years of that we've lived in this town and maybe half that on elected bodies. I think we could put forward a number of good ideas with some prioritization. We don't need any reports done right away, but maybe have Steve and Vin and other department heads have a chance to listen to us and maybe bring a few of the major developers in just to hear us and offer what their suggestions might be. But I think we need to do this, B, because all I see us doing here is just reacting or in a defensive situation here with business demands, waterfront demands, so on and so forth. So I think it'd be good just to have the council sit down and obviously it'd be a public meeting, but I really think we need to put our thoughts on the table where we think this community, what we ought to look like in another 10 or 20 years and then follow the procedures after that.
Further comments here at the table? Polly?
We probably all have some pet projects.
Is that on Paul?
No. We probably all have some pet projects we'd like to have looked into. I'm interested in, and I know Dale gave us some information on this earlier, on having the town council again on television. I'd like to look into that. That's one of the issues I'd like to see too. I think that the town is interested in what goes on and we like to, we would like to promote that. But we probably all, I think it's a great idea Jim, to have a discussion like that.
I'd just like to have folks out there see how we're thinking and maybe we can really pull together some priority situations that need to be improved in town and, you know, you know, certainly over my life here, I've fought a lot of battles here, but you know, it's time, things are changing and I've got to change with them and I just think there are a number of areas here that a community needs to see how we think rather than always being reactionary, defensive to what comes before us.
Are you saying you want to review the ordinances that are in place already?
No, I don't even want that.
Saying that are good, but you want to review them and sit down?
Yeah, I don't even want to re-
I'm trying to figure out where you're going with this.
Yeah, I don't want to review the ordinance, I just would like to see how we all think. After all these years on the council living in town here, I've got some ideas I'd like to put out there, but I'd rather hear what the town, council members with me have to say and see maybe if we have something in sync that we need to prioritize and begin thinking about in this community.
Jim, I have no problem with meeting if you want to go over things, I just, you know, if we have ordinances in place, then I guess we have to start there and review those, like something with the wind turbines when you, I'm just jotting a few of them down and that's what I'm just trying to say, you say you don't want any work done, but we have the ordinances in place, so should we start there and review there or that's, I'm just trying to figure out where we're going with that.
Well, where I'd like to go frankly, you know, divide this into two sections. One, how can we be more helpful with some of our major institutions and state policies down here which affect South Kingstown, I brought up the hospital, the University of Rhode Island. We have the beach situation, we could have further beach situations. How do we work with coastal? I just want to be on top and ahead of this curve rather than being beaten up all the time with what might be a regulation that doesn't fit either today's climate or today's climate, a business climate or today's personal or household climate.
It sounds too that you should probably have the legislators involved in some of this because a lot of it is upstate type of work versus, I understand what you're saying down here, but when it starts to get stuff that's from upstate, we need the legislators, I think, to be part of it. I don't have a problem with the discussion with them too.
Yep. As I said, the process would come afterwards. I'd just like to see if you all have the same concerns I do, what I've seen happening here with the council over the last three, four years. And I'd just like to see if we, where we have, where we share some of the same ideas of what we need to have a change and what we need to be a lot more proactive on, which would eventually affect the comprehensive plan and planning.
Carol?
We definitely have to have an agenda around that though Jim, we could be here for days on end, I think, with an open-ended discussion. I think, with an open-ended discussion of everything. So we'd have to come up with some limit on the agenda that we want to talk about.
I think we can put that together in, you know, a couple, three hours, just two hours for our own thoughts and maybe hear from some of our developers in the community, beachfront folks, individuals, too. But no one ever gets to really see how we think about where the town's going. And we've certainly all been up here long enough. So I'm sorry to disappoint you that the agenda here, or it's not. But I really think we need a conversation here, in a conversation, serious conversation. What can we do to, you know, does helping Newport with either casino issue or with the Americas Cup issue, does that backstop so we can fill up some of our hotel rooms and other businesses? All these things are connected, but how can we do a better job of this? And I just don't think we've gotten there. So I was hoping for a lot more enthusiastic response, but I don't seem to be getting it.
I haven't spoken yet, Jim. I would embrace something like this, along with Polly. I think that, you know, sometimes we do get caught up with agenda items here at the town council. So I think it would be a time for us to share our thoughts with some of the things that may not be some ordinances, Kath. And I think that you're right. We do, you know, a lot of this will be relying on, you know, upstate with the legislators, but I think the initial meeting, and I've jotted down some of the topics here. I know one thing that I've always wished that we could do and maybe do a better job is support South County Hospital with some resolutions with the changes in legislation that, you know, they're going through. So I think it will give us a time to have a discussion here at the table and maybe walk away with three priorities that we can really focus giving some attention to and passing on to Steve, giving Steve and, you know, our town staff some guidelines with different paths that we maybe would like to take as town council members. So I would welcome something. I agree there definitely needs to be an agenda. And, you know, but the last meeting, Jim, you said February. I'm not quite sure if you're still hoping. And I know that once we start the budget season, you know, the time is really tight. So are you still thinking February?
Actually, I prefer to jam together two of our capital improvement meetings and try to run this for the third time. I just think we need to start looking at the various issues here because things are changing at the state level rapidly. Our economy could really be continuing a crunch here. And I just think we've got to be thinking and innovative, and that's the whole idea of it. So sooner the better, and, you know, I know we're going to be busy, but I think it's important. And it's never a good time. It is never a time that, you know, that's good for all of us here. But I think it's an important issue to discuss.
Carol?
I think as far as the Newport next summer with the tall ships and the races that may go on there, I think we had a really great meeting with Narragansett and the Joint Economic Development Committees from both towns. And I think we should really pursue that again to see if we can bring any of that business on this side of the bridge for next summer. Because I think we're really on to something with that group. I know you were there, Jim, and so was Ella. And a lot of input. Mr. Massey was there, Dr. Massey, right?
Dr. Maisy, Maisy, from URI.
And I think that would be a good thing to pursue as far as some issues also.
So if we can, Steve and I will talk and possibly see if we can come up with a date. And we will ask for input for an agenda, and we'll put something together.
Thank you.
What I would like to do is just mention a few things. We have on December fifteenth, the South Kingston Senior Services, the holiday party. So hopefully, all of the town council will be able to make it. It starts at ten-thirty, and the entertainment is by Fiddle and Keys. So we're looking forward to spending time with our, at our senior center.
I unfortunately will not be able to make that. I have to work that day.
Okay. And I was fortunate to be able to attend the Mothers Against Drunk Driving Candlelight Vigil. I know Jim, I think, also attended. It was at South Kingston High School. It was sponsored here in South Kingston. Very, very moving. And our South Kingston High School Students Against Destructive Decisions, that's our SAD group, was also there. And very, very moving, the two families that spoke, were the Tucublis family and the Driscoll family. So at this holiday time, hopefully, all of our residents will stay safe. Also, I just wanted to mention that the Elks on January fourteenth is hosting a benefit dinner for the Wilkes family. This is Dylan Wilkes, a little toddler who had a misfortunate accident. So on January fourteenth, there is a spaghetti dinner. The tickets are ten dollars, and there's going to be music provided by DJ Steve Iquali and raffles from all sorts of local businesses. So if anyone would like to attend that, that is January fourteenth. Three o'clock to seven. It's just for a great cause. And then just, you know, just remember, all of our residents, shop local. This always brings back, you know, to our community. We have gift certificates out there from the Chamber. And if we can support our local businesses, it definitely is a return to the town. And last but not least, just, this is our last official meeting. We do meet with the school committee next Monday, December nineteenth. And we do have January fourth, January fifth, and January eleventh as our Capital Improvement Plan meetings. So happy holidays, you know, to all of our residents on behalf of the South Kingston Town Council. We wish all of our residents a happy, healthy holiday and hopefully find the time to create great memories with all of your loved ones. So. Any other comments from interested citizens? And we have the town. I'm sorry. Bobby Treger.
I just want to say that I support the thoughts, and you all see the support in some sense. Trying to move in a direction that is our mind. I think I alluded to, but I don't say it that well. But I think that part, I know you have a big job just handling federal licenses as well. I understand. But at the same time, things are changing and we have some serious stuff coming down the way. And actually, it's not just going to go away. If it does, I hope I'm all, I mean, I listen to the people that are fifty times smarter than I and talking about it. And it is, I don't hear anything break coming out of my mouth. So we've got a problem, and I think we just go on and we all have, you know. I think it's a good idea. I would hope one thing that I'd like to see happen, and I think you've done this many years.
Excuse me, Bob? Could you just use the mic? Because you have great ideas. We want to make sure that the mic gets-
Well, my idea is simply that use the brains of this community. There's some very bright people right here. I was in the bar, I'll just give you a quick story. I was in the bar shop. We were sitting there listening to a conversation with somebody sitting in a chair. And I thought I recognized who it was. And this gentleman, I'm not going to even mention his name. He just got off the plane with him helping him. He worked the hell out of the world, right here. He was in the market all the time. He's a young, he's a guy. He's in his eighties. But he's like he's in his sixties. But, I mean, that's the kind of people we have surrounding. And it's people, I think it would be about if they had like four or most of the while with the town council and invite people and just grow a big time for them. Yeah, I believe what you might get. There's a lot of bright people out there. And I'm not saying you are, but.
Thanks. Okay, any further questions? Okay, comments at this time, town managers' report.
One other thing that Steve mentioned, the issue of a rumor about URI constructing a road. It is no rumor. URI is proposing to construct a ring road around the existing parking lots that are used at the Ryan Center. And it would come around the backside of the parking lots and then connect back into Plains Road. It would provide an opportunity for the university to get traffic off of the intersection of Plains and Plains by having the loop road that would go through some of the agricultural land. I'll make it clear, too, that the town is also discussing with the university the potential for the lease of Plains Road from the university parking lots to One Thirty-Eight for their care and maintenance, since that's becoming a major throughway for university traffic. And it would allow for really a four-way intersection at Flag and Plains Road. It's something the council had talked about with the university at the last town gown meeting that was held. But that idea is being advanced at this point. It will be reviewed by the town once final details as to what the university's proposing on their property will occur. So I just wanted to reference that. A few other items. I've indicated to the council that the town has submitted to the Coastal Resource Management Council today a shore reclassification request for Mattoonik Beach Road area. That reclassification request has been filed to allow for a reclassification of the property from its current designation as a coastal headland, bluffs and cliffs, to one which would be a man-made shoreline. The details are spelled out within the letter as to the reasons the town believes this is necessary. The most important issue here is to provide the property owners that are subject to serious erosion at this time with an opportunity to provide a coordinated engineering plan to be able to provide some type of long-term protection to those properties. We're also asking that the change not be made through the state plan itself, but rather through the local plan, the special area management plan, the SAMP, for the Mattoonik area. This way, it would not set precedent as far as other permit requests that may come from other Class One waters, looking for similar relief from the coastal regulations. That item, along with the town's application for the installation of the Sheeppile Wall, are currently pending before the Coastal Resource Management Council. As the council's aware, no hearing dates have been set. And in fact, the staff report to be prepared by coastal, they've asked the town to comment on each of the objection letters in advance of them providing a formal response for review by the Coastal Management Council itself. So that item has been filed as of today. Last item I wanted to report on is that Dougway Bridge will be opening for business probably about four o'clock tomorrow. We have directed that the opening of the bridge occur for vehicle use. And the vehicle use would be for passenger vehicles and trucks, small trucks, pickup truck size. There'll be signage on the bridge indicating that. The council approved the installation of guardrail on both sides of that bridge at the last council meeting. It will probably take several weeks for fabrication of those guardrails because the materials are not readily available to the private company that's been hired to do that work for several weeks. Rather than keep the bridge closed, what I've had public services do is to line where the guardrail will be located with Jersey barriers at this point to provide safe passage and access for the approaches to the bridge so that once that work's completed tomorrow, the bridge will be open for the vehicle traffic. We had hoped to have it open by Christmas, and it looks as if we finally got to a point where we can open it tomorrow. The pedestrian use is going to be restricted at this point until we get the guardrails in place. And probably sometime in late spring, we'll be able to, be able to get the pedestrian ways completely open because at this point, the pedestrian ways where the guardrail is going to be located, we need to extend the walking path itself off of the bridge to provide safe passage. That work will also be completed sometime in the early spring. So we will have the bridge open, and hopefully, people can enjoy that once again since it's closing, I believe, in February this year. I'd be glad to answer any questions on any of the reports that have been provided to the council to date. If not, that completes my report.
Jim?
Yes, Steve, the newspapers recently showed the transmission from the Deep Water Wind Farm off of Block Island into the Narragansett Beach area, then underground under Route One, et cetera, to our grid network in Wakefield. So is that, is there any choice of what goes on there or the location? Do we have any say in that? And number two, what happens when it reaches the grid in South Kingston? Do wires change? Does capacity change? Does it get larger, bigger, more, you know, frightening? What are we looking at here?
We provided the council with a memo, I think, a month ago on this issue. Essentially, the use of the right-of-way by a public utility is a standing right. We don't have the right to prevent the location of utility lines within the town's right-of-way. The proposal that's been presented at this point will come in through Narragansett, through Narragansett Avenue East. It'll advance east, west from the Narragansett Town Line, up Narragansett Avenue East. Will be cross-drilled under Route One and follow the path on the Route One right-of-way on the Southbound Lane adjacent to Dunkin' Donuts, and will cross over where Jaber's property is. Will cross over to pass the property where the Mazda dealership is and go onto a private road. It'll then go along the private road where the company has purchased a parcel. The name of the road's escaping me.
Albro.
Albro Lane. They have purchased a piece of property there that's adjacent to the power grid lines that run behind the, behind the dealership. They will then install a building, which will be a switching station that will allow for access into the national grid lines. That's how it will come into South Kingston and where it will come into the grid line.
All right, yeah, the papers made it sound like coming ashore in Narragansett was still an option. I couldn't quite read between the lines.
We had several meetings. We've had two meetings with the company building the generators. We requested, South Kingston requested, that they hold a public informational meeting, which now has been scheduled for the fourteenth, I believe, this week, for a meeting at, I believe it's going to be held at the Mumford Road School, where they will have persons available to be able to answer specific questions. The line will not be an aerial line. It will be an underground wire that will go up the road. At this point, we've provided permission for them to do archaeological survey work within the town right-of-way, as well as to do borings within the town right-of-way to determine what type of subsurface conditions they'll be dealing with to bring the conduit through. There'll be two conduit lines, two lines within the conduit itself. One will be the power line itself that would allow energy either from the grid to go out to Block Island or generated through the wind- to Block Island, or generated through the wind turbines to be pushed back into the grid, depending on what time of the year it is and the operations of that energy facility. The second line will be the telemetry that's necessary to be able to control the various components of that system. So there's two wires that will be in a single conduit that will probably be installed about three feet below the road surface. The specific location within the road hasn't been defined at this point until the borings have been completed. That would then have to be approved through a right-of-way permit through the Public Services Department. That's really the only regulatory ability that the town would have associated with this use of the right-of-way.
All right. And the switching station, when it reaches that in South Kingston, is everything going to be housed in the building? Or are there going to be more wires and larger, you know, carrying those structures to carry wires? What happens at that point?
My understanding is that what will come out from the conduit itself into the building will provide then an overhead line that will go and meet the power grid itself. We haven't seen final details as to how that construction would occur. Within the town zoning ordinance, those type of switching stations are allowed in all zones. So it's not a question of zoning, but it will have to go through a commercial site review with the planning board.
Okay. Thank you.
If I could just backtrack here for one minute from, I just wanted to also mention that the holiday lighting of the tree at the Village Green, Terry Murphy definitely thanked everyone for the hayrides with the Peastdale Neighborhood Revitalization, Inc., and the Wakefield Concert Band, and Community Urban Resources Board, CORB. But she neglected to thank herself. It was a great job, and it was a great evening, and wonderful to see all the children, you know, as Santa arrived. So that was a great, great, great time for the community. Thank you. Anything else, Steve? Okay. Town solicitors report.
I want to ask you a question. I have a couple of questions.
Jim?
Mike, I certainly hope this is just, is it Johnston, that's now, the town council's requiring everyone to take an oath that speaks before the council?
North Providence.
North Providence.
Right. And interesting, just for your information, the City of East Providence requires that also.
Okay. All right. But there's nothing afoot at the state level to possibly force us?
Absolutely.
Okay, no, this is good.
I cannot see that happening ever, well, anything's possible, but I don't think it's probable.
Right. Thank you.
And I believe there are no appointments, and which brings us to new business. We have a resolution authorizing a water bid to Process Engineers and Constructors Incorporated at 165 Mill Street, Cranston, Rhode Island, to furnish and install three gas-fired boilers in an amount not to exceed $198,760, including a, did we change the $20,000 to $18,000, Steve? Is it $20,000 or $18,000 contingency?
Right now, it's as presented on the agenda. What we're still working with National Grid, and I believe the $10,000 will be available, but at this point, we need to just go with what's on the agenda.
Okay. Including a $20,000 contingency is further described in a memorandum from the Public Services Director to the Town Manager dated December 6, 2011, and entitled "Bid Recommendation: Regional Waste Water Treatment Facility Boiler Replacement Project."
The town constructed the wastewater treatment facility in 1975 and went online in early 1977. Since that time, the three boilers, no, the boilers, two boilers that were there are oil-fired boilers. The town was successful in March of this year in obtaining a $168,650 grant through the Energy Efficiency Grant through the Rhode Island Office of Energy Resources. That grant was to provide for a couple of things. One was the installation of a four-inch natural gas line down West Marlin Street to the treatment, wastewater treatment facility. And secondly, was to replace the existing 30-plus-year-old boilers with three new gas-fired boilers. That would be at least 85% efficient or greater with proper control systems that would allow for modulating and the firing rate on the lead lag feedback system. All of this will reduce what our cost is of operation of the facility. The cost that we have obtained as far as the replacement for those boilers with the new ones is approximately $28,000 higher than what we have available within the grant itself. However, there's still a $10,000 rebate through National Grid that we believe that we're eligible for. If that's the case, we'll be over by about $18,600. That would be split between the three regional partners, which is Narragansett, South Kingston, and the University of Rhode Island. The cost distribution on any cost overrun would be based on plant utilization. At this point, it's about 37% South Kingston's cost, 44% Narragansett, and URI around 19%. Our recommendation is to go with the lowest qualified bid for the replacement of those boilers with the new gas-fired units that will really be paid for almost in total by the grant that's in place. Jim had asked a question earlier this evening on whether or not we were looking at being able to have a dual burners for the boilers. We're not doing that. This was really an energy grant to deal with natural gas. And if we were looking at having a dual source of energy, either oil or gas, the cost would be considerably higher. And really, we don't think at this point that it would be an efficient use of the municipal dollars. Because the cost difference is there, because you'd have to have really two different types of burners within the overall setup.
There are no questions, I'll move approval of new business item A.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed abstention. Motion carries 5-0-0. New business item B is a resolution authorizing an extension of contact, contract originally granted on April 25, 2011, to Tom Irwin Incorporated, 11A Street, Burlington, Massachusetts, for the purchase of turf management supplies and turf consulting services for the 2012 growing season. In accordance with all proposal specifications, an amount not to exceed $10,850, including a contingency as further described in a memorandum from the Director of Leisure Services to the Town Manager dated December 7, 2011, and entitled "Turf Management Supplies and Services Recommendation."
The town provides through the recreation program with maintenance and service on the Curtis Corner Soccer Football Field. That field is the most heavily-used turf area that we have in town. Last year, the town led a contract to provide for consulting services for how to stabilize the soils, as well as to minimize the amount of pesticide use and to enhance the safety and the playability of that field. We've been satisfied with the performance of the contract to date. It was a one-year contract that allowed for two additional one-year extensions. We're asking to approve the extension of that contract for another season. And in doing it early, what we'll be able to do is to pre-buy materials and be able to receive a substantial discount by doing it upfront. So I'd recommend that the council approve the contract as presented in Terry's memo.
I move approval of new business item B. Second.
We have motion is second. All.
Carol?
I'd just like to note that in the report, it does mention that the number of injuries on the field as compared to last year has been reduced, which may be partially attributed to better overall coverage and thicker turf, which is a big bonus, I think, for all of our high school athletes and in the visiting athletes. So, kudos. Anyway.
Thanks for mentioning that, Carol. Okay, ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed abstention. Motion carries 5-0-0. New business item C. This is a resolution authorizing an extension of contract originally granted on January 10, 2011, to Santa Buckley Energy Incorporated, PO Box 1141, Bridgeport, Connecticut, for the purchase of unleaded gasoline and ultra-low sulfur diesel fuel from January 1, 2012, to December 31, 2012, with option to extend for an additional one-year term. At the Daily Journal of Commerce price, Port of Providence less the discount of .153 cents a gallon for unleaded gasoline and the increment of .051 cents a gallon for ultra-low sulfur diesel, to include any applicable taxes. In accordance with specifications as described in a resolution from the City of Warwick dated November 8, 2011, regarding their bid number 2011-137, entitled "Gasoline and Low Sulfur Diesel Fuel," and is further described in a memorandum from the Financial Controller to the Town Manager dated December 7, 2011, and entitled "Statewide Municipal Gasoline and Diesel Fuel Contract Extension."
Just like with the oil contracts that we have, you're really dealing with what the transportation cost will be. We're working under the state master contract. This is a large contract because there's approximately 90,000 gallons of gasoline that are purchased on a yearly basis through the town, as well as another 41,000 of diesel. So overall, if we, if the prices didn't change from today, which they most likely will going up, you know, it's well over $430,000 worth of commodity purchase. But we see this as the most efficient way of going forward as far as being able to get the product that's necessary to meet town needs.
Thank you. We have a motion.
I move approval of new business item C.
Second.
We have motion is second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed abstention. Motion carries 5-0-0. New business item D. This is a resolution adopting the multi-hazard mitigation strategy plan, strategies for reducing risk from natural hazards in South Kingston, Rhode Island, as updated November 2010, and authorizing the updated plan to be forwarded to the Rhode Island Emergency Management Agency and Federal Emergency Management Agency for their review and approval as further described in a memorandum from the Director of Planning to the Town Manager dated December 7, 2011, and entitled "Local Multi-Hazard Mitigation Strategy Plan Update."
The Federal Disaster Mitigation Act of 2000 requires all cities and towns, as well as states, to prepare a natural multi-hazard mitigation plan. The town of South Kingston first adopted a plan in January of 2006, and then further amended it in April of 2006. In 2007, the town received a $100,000 grant to be able to do a total rewrite of the hazard pre-disaster mitigation planning component. This type of a document really identifies those things that create risk and vulnerability within the community. There's 10 specific areas of hazards that are prioritized, and obviously, they would be different across the country. But they deal with wind, climate change, inland flooding, severe winter storms, drought, dam failures, earthquakes, coastal flooding, sea level rise, and wildfires. Within the plan itself, each of those types of risks are analyzed as to how they affect the community itself, and then those are ranked. Within the ranking itself, there's a review made as to what the economic, the social, and environmental impact is associated with disasters associated with any of those 10 factors. The most important part of the document is a ranking on vulnerabilities. The 2006 plan had the number-one concern for pre-hazard mitigation was in terms of dealing with dam hazards. That has been addressed since 2006, where we have really completed the analysis of our dams and rebuilt several of those dams. That is no longer the controlling concern that we have within the document. So the document's been reprioritized. The prioritization now is the number-one is the South Shore Water System main, looking at the ability of replacing or providing a loop to be able to do away with the East Mattoonik Barrier Beach line. What that would entail would be construction of a line that would most likely follow Route 1 to Succotash Road from Mattoonik Beach Road. The second component would be dealing with protection of the Mattoonik Beach Road itself. Based on the application, I don't think there's a lot of detail that's necessary on that aspect of it. Based on the application that the town has submitted for the sheet pile wall, that is also a risk that we are looking at pre-disaster mitigation efforts to be able to protect the integrity of that road system. Third component is the necessity for the relocation of the town beach pavilion and its associated septic system. And the fourth component within the prioritization would deal with all of the South Shore bordering the Atlantic Ocean as far as what the impact of erosion is having, not just on public facilities, but on private property. The next priority area would be continuing to have significant review made on hazardous dams. We'd also be then looking at barrier beaches, the Pettis-Cwambskut River flooding areas along Middle Bridge, as well as flooding on Sagatucket Road, and the cost or measures that can be taken to provide for tree damage that occurs during major storms. So that's the new prioritization that's listed there. Within each of those components, then, there are public education components, there's public notification requirements, as well as safety measures that can be taken and are isolated in advance of the hazard creating difficulty for the community. The plan also provides an opportunity for us to have an approval through the council, an approval through the federal government, approval through the state government, then provides us with eligibility for federal funding assistance for hazard mitigation. As noted in the capital improvement program this year, there are two grants that we have potential funding availability, both federal programs that will come under the Hazard Mitigation Strategy Programs. With the approval of this updated document, we would then be eligible to be able to go through final review for hopeful approval on those two grants that would provide most of the funds necessary for the relocation of the beach pavilion. So I'd ask the council, I've given you a full copy on the DVD that we provided of the entire document. There's a good deal of information that's in there relative to each of the different hazards that have been evaluated by the local committee. I'd be glad to answer any questions the council has on the document, and I would also request the council consider adoption of the resolution as presented this evening.
Do we have a motion?
I move approval of new business item D. Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Any questions for Steve? Or Vin? Well, the only question that I had was the underground fuel tanks. Do we, do we have quite a bit of them here in South Kingston?
We are looking to remove all of the underground storage tanks, because underground storage tanks, whether they're in the private sector or publicly owned, create a great deal of potential hazard if there's a leakage that occurs, particularly one that's undetected. Because then, when the unit is removed, the soils have to be removed and then disposed of as hazardous material. So that is a risk that needs to be analyzed, particularly on those that are controlled by the town. We have removed most of our underground tanks. I think one of the few remaining places is here at Town Hall. We still have the underground tanks in front of the finance department.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Okay, we have motion is second. Ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed abstention. Motion carries 5-0-0. Which brings us to new business item E. This is a resolution authorizing the submission of a fiscal year 2012 Historic Precipitation Projects for Certified Local Government Grants in Aid Application in the Amount of $10,500 for the purpose of developing a comprehensive guide document for historic- property owners, as described in a memorandum from the Director of Planning to the Town Manager dated December 7, 2011, and entitled, "2012 Certified Local Government Application."
The Historic District Commission has requested the council's approval to submit on this application. Essentially, 20 years ago, the grant was provided for educational pamphlets for the Kingston Village Historic District. The Historic District Commission now wants to revamp that document, which would, and also to include the Peastale Village and the downtown Wakefield Historic Districts that have been identified for federal funding potential. This would provide each of the property owners with an opportunity to get written documentation on the various opportunities that are available for funding or for controls of their property, or better management of their property. Would also provide an educational component for the public as to the types of buildings and the type of value within the historic districts within the community. The grant would provide for a consultant to prepare the documentation in conjunction with the Historic District Commission. So I would recommend the council approve the application as presented with Vin Murray's memorandum.
Thank you, Steve. Do we have a motion?
I move approval of new business item E.
Second.
Any further discussion or questions? Ready to vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention. Motion carries 5-0-0. Which brings us to the end of the agenda. We do have a closed executive session. This is a closed executive session pursuant to Rhode Island General Law 42-46-5A2 to discuss matters pertaining to litigation, village liquors, LLC, appeal of liquor license denial. Can we have a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention. Motion carries 5-0-0. Could we have a roll call, please, Dale?
Council President Whaley?
Aye.
Council Vice President McAtee?
Aye.
Councilwoman Eddy?
Aye.
Councilwoman Fogarty?
Aye.
Councilman O'Neill?
Aye.
Unanimous affirmative vote to recess to close the executive session at 8:48.
Thank you, Dale.